Well, good afternoon. Want to welcome all of you to the Wednesday, December 14th, 2022 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors and very pleased to welcome all of you to the chambers. And again, glad you're here to join us and those that are joining us remotely as well. So with that, we're going to start the meeting as we normally do and make some announcements and then we'll go into the agenda. So with that, Flo, I'll turn to you to make the announcements, call the role, establish your quorum, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance and move forward. Thanks.
All right. Good afternoon. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, December 18th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open up public comments for each agenda item or for off-agenda matters, and when the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium to make your comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. And please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your public comment. Each caller will be transferred into the meeting for each specific agenda item number. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record, and if you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact us at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding.
And Flo, I would ask you, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance, if you would. Thanks.
All rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. So with that, then, we're going to go to our agenda, and we have the first, as we normally do, our off-agenda items. And so I don't know if we have anybody on the phone for non-agenda items, but we do have one speaker in chambers. So Mackenzie, you had signed up for off-agenda, so I think you're going to lead us in a little prayer or poetry or both, so.
No, but I think it is fun that I'm going to give one more, for you at least, social change lesson.
Okay.
For those who don't know, my name is Mackenzie. I'm a community organizer in town, and we spend quite a bit of time with the Board, so you may have no context to some of what I'm saying. Where do I start? Thank you. Social change lesson. Institutions and systems are created and destroyed all the time, some every few decades, the big ones every few hundred years, meaning that this one is almost out of clothes. And the reckoning is already here, y'all. It's like Y and we and all of the people making sense of the devastation around us exist, all from a different place in our understanding or analysis, but still either way forged from the struggle nonetheless, and here to tear down every institution founded upon things that had us and have us, living as serfs, slaves, all through domination, exploitation, imperialism, et cetera. These systems don't like us. It's why they're anti-woke, anti-trans, anti-woman, anti-radical law, sweeping your nation and upheld by the institutions as I stand here today. They are what held the witch trials, created race when they saw black and white workers organizing together, came up with the word homosexual in the 1860s to other us and keep producing a workforce. It beat men so hard that they no longer cried, hugged, or kissed in the street by the 1880s, doing all of this and more with the wealth built by black bodies on stolen land and with stolen children. Entire institutions created to first, I mean, created to slave catch, then union bust. Women couldn't vote well into the 1900s, and that's just white women. Black folks way later than that couldn't even sit in the front of the bust till my mom was born. But the state and sanctioned murders of the revolutionaries in the 60s, divestment in the 70s, war on drugs in the 80s, the three-strikes laws after I was born, made sure that brown and black folks were instead in the back of cop cars. These are not things to be proud of or fight for. We, as humankind, have abolished every institution rooted in our oppression, challenged the scarcity mindset, and demanded the creation of new. We abolished slavery and institution older than landlords, so know that we're coming for those too. Up next, jails and private property. It's a thing we do when things no longer serve us and are rooted and are not rooted in our humanity, only ever stagnated by the haves, their false god, the actors and their systems, and the palace guards. My favorite part about human history is that it stops repeating itself because we eventually one day say no more, only pushed forward because of the harms it actually created. Behind every oppression have been the have-nots, pushing it forward and demanding more. The minimum wage is less than 100 years old, and because that's not enough, we're coming for more. We live in a world where we grow entire fields of food without a single worker in it, then throw away 40% of it because we can't sell it. And we make houses out of three-day printers, and when we get to giving it according to need, we'll abolish the dollar bill, because when everyone can have one, there's no need for this value system. We will redefine value or no longer use the word at all. Y'all misunderstand. Our demands to tear it down are also our demands of the transformation of and the building of new. It's okay to create new forms of accountability that don't look like throwing away the key. It's okay to build education systems not built on exploitation and property taxes, therefore leaving poor neighbors behind. It's okay to build healthcare systems that don't bankrupt families or kill black mothers and babies at higher rates than during slavery because they were thrown into a for-profit healthcare system built for and by white men and still has some learning eugenics. And I'm almost done, I know. Thank you so much for always your time. These institutions have us ranked some of the lowest in education, healthcare, and human rights, but the highest in incarceration and military spending. Simply, I ask that you all do not fear tearing these things down. In the universe, the only constant is change, so embrace the learning, the conversations, the critiques, and be a part of it, because what you do today will absolutely go down in history, and one day it will either be revered or revolted. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Okay, all right. Yes, the, okay. Thank you, Mackenzie, and for another lesson well shared. Just a minute, we're doing a little.
I explained to them, chairperson, that we're calling the very next item and that the public comments would be going right after I call that item into the record.
Right, right. Okay. So any more off-agenda? I have one here, I believe, but any on the phones? Any off-agenda?
We do not, as of right now.
Okay, good. Okay, so Gabby Trejo, off-agenda? Yep. Good afternoon, Gabby.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Gabby Trejo. I'm the executive director for Sacramento Act, and on behalf of Sacramento area congregations together, we wanted to just share our gratitude and appreciation for your service. Supervisor Natoli, in my tenure, tenures that I've lived here in Sacramento, I have experienced you to both be a true leader that sits with, has been able to sit with our organization in tension and stay in relationship. I've always appreciated you being, saying yes to coming to our actions, even when it wasn't pleasant, and for always, you know, saying yes to an invitation of conversation and staying in relationship with us. As an organization that is constantly looking at the problems in the community and also talking to people in the community about the solutions, it is very rare to come across a leader like yourself who I always know that even when we are not in agreement with the solution, that you are at least are willing to sit down with us and sit in that tension and wrestle with us, you know? And so I want to read this little plaque that we have for you. It says, "Sacramento Act empowers ordinary people to identify and change the conditions that create economic and racial injustice. Our shared faith values call us to envision and build a just and equity community for all." And so we want to share this with you because we know that you embody this in every, you know, part of who you are. So thank you so much for everything you've done for our community over the years.
Well, thank you, Gabby. And again, I would just express my appreciation certainly in Sacramento Act, every congregation together, certainly you have, you know, many folks certainly align with the work that you do. And again, I know you and many others have spent many hours in these chambers, certainly representing concerns and voicing them very clearly. And again, I've always appreciated that, and you're right, some of the sessions were not always easy, but again, I've learned, as I have from people throughout this audience today, but throughout the community, many things about our community that were important, and certainly learned about myself, and I've learned about the passion by which you and many others have approached issues for oftentimes folks who aren't able to be in these chambers to voice for themselves because they're working or they're, you know, they feel muted in their voice. And again, I certainly appreciated Gabby working with you and your predecessors and certainly the folks that have come before this body. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gabby. Thanks for sharing. Yes. Okay. And with that, then, there are no other off-agenda speakers, I understand it. Is that correct?
No, not as of right now, no.
All right, very good. Okay. Again, my thanks to Gabby and to every congregation together. Let's go to item number three on the agenda, and just by way of note, when we get to item four, I'm going to turn that over to our very capable vice chair, soon-be-chair supervisor Desmond. But so item three, if you want to read that into the record.
I do.
Yeah.
Item number three is a presentation by the Stevens Foundation to Sacramento County in appreciation for supporting the American Youth Football's California Big Western Region.
Okay. And I believe Kim Stevens? Kim, is she here this afternoon? Okay. Well, she may arrive in a bit. I would just note that Kim and the Stevens Foundation, and I know they reached out to other members of this Board, were instrumental in bringing the American Youth Football Northern California Big Western Regional Tournament to our community just a few weeks ago. And we had Chamber of Commerce weather that weekend. It wasn't raining, it was, the sun was shining, and I think we had teams from throughout the West Coast that traveled here to be a part of the youth football tournament, but they also had cheerleading squads and certainly parents and supporters that came to our community. And you know, Kim and a number of others worked really, really hard to make sure that that happened. There was a lot of logistics and certainly fundraising that went with that. So compliments to them and to all the teams that participated. We had some local teams that participated. I don't know who won the tournament, but irrespective of that, I think it was an important function, certainly highlighting our community and the youth endeavors, and we're glad to host it here. And again, congratulations to the Stevens Foundation for their work. So if Kim arrives, we can certainly call on her a little later today. So with that, I'm going to go to item number four and turn that over to Vice Chair Desmond and my colleagues.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I feel like before we announce this, I wish there was some big bell or something to ring because this is a very momentous occasion, but I will let Ask Flo please read this.
Yes. It would be my honor. Item four is the presentation of resolution honoring Supervisor Dawn Natoli on the occasion of his retirement.
Thank you, Flo. You should keep the tissue handy. Everybody probably should, me included, I know. But we're going to, we're going to do, we're actually going to take public comments first, and I know Gabby Trejo, I just saw her leave, so I assume she's not, but I have several other speaker forums for in-person public comment. I don't know if we have anybody on the phone yet for public comment, but I'll check with you after I go through these. So I'll start first with, it'll be Talitha Floyd, then Mackenzie, and then Liz Blum. Oh, Talitha Left, okay. So you are Mackenzie.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Mackenzie Wilson, and funny that I say this every time, but be sad that this will be the last time I get to address you like this, Dawn. I want to start with how grateful I am for you, for every moment you listened and learned in love, for every moment you knew something was a call for love or an expression of love, and that sometimes things cannot be fit into three minutes, and for the love that you gave to our time. I give thanks for every time you dug deep to get to the root of issues and for every fire-ass question you have ever asked. I will never forget every time you called me or us, for every time you went through the things with us in person, for every time you didn't look at the clock in our meetings, for every note you took, and for every late night you were still in this building. I give thanks for all of this and you and more, because what I know is that if you gave this much love to me and a group of radical and passionate young people, then you gave it to everybody. And I give so much thanks and am in awe of you because there is only so much time in a day, but somehow you like literally did it all. It's a whole thing to give thanks for, the knowing that you read every email, every report, returned every phone call. You are a wonderful man, person, and supreme advisor. You, Dawn, are not a dime a dozen, and if all electives were like you, I probably wouldn't have been turned into the radical that I am today. And I think deep down that you know that you are different than most. But your existence gives me faith that one day we won't be too radical and that we, and that there are and will be elected that see vision and are a part of transformation and the creation of things that make community, that makes a community of love and care for us all. I sat in these chambers and listened to your love for years, not as long as some, but most recently in my life, many. Your love of this community for parks and for, and that I love that you look at the animal shelter report every day. I didn't, I don't have to know you inside and out to know that I love you, Dawn. Do you remember when my son came to the meeting and we talked about his fear of what happens if y'all don't make the right decisions? Well, thank you for every time that you did, and even though I have been sitting in these chairs when you haven't, we love you anyways because your willingness to introduce new thought, learn, we'll have you a radical yet, and I give thanks that you keep, that you are going to be a community member out here to tell these folks what the right decisions are. I give thanks for you, Dawn. I give thanks for you never talking us up to crazy and for every moment you have been a part of the creation of the world that we all know is possible and for walking on that path with us. You've helped to change the world, Dawn, and I don't even know if you know it. And I don't know if you'll go down in history, but I know that you will go down in my books, literally. And my books, literally. And what we have done here together will forever stay. So we see you, and we're going to miss you in those seats, but I hope to see you out in these streets with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie.
Thank you. Next, Liz Blum.
Notes here is allowed, Dawn.
It is.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. So it hasn't been just one moment, but years of consistent and sustained dedication to this work, to doing the research, to the willingness to listen to all perspectives on an issue and come to your own independent conclusion. That has made you the incredible leader that you are. Your fervent curiosity and work ethic have resulted in your commitment to learning as much as you can about a topic before making decisions and advocating for what you think is right with such courage and conviction. Your careful and considerate questions have helped the Board and the public gain deeper understanding on endless topics and decisions. You tend to prioritize what is necessary over what is most convenient or comfortable. Even when decade, even after decades of public service, you're still taking home boxes of papers to read to ensure you understand all the details. And as a fellow truth seeker, willing to read every page to find it, I know how much time and energy that it can take to uncover the truth. Thank you for your tireless sacrifice and dedication. Your kindness and empathy has also set a precedent for how to treat others with humility and respect. I'm not the only one who notices your eye contact, your intentional and active listening to the community when we come to speak in these chambers, to share facts, to share our personal stories with this Board and the public. You've shown Sacramento County what it means to serve with integrity, an ongoing commitment to the truth and an open mind. You've shown us through your actions that you are committed to listening to others, even those you may disagree with, in order to fully understand an issue before making a decision that impacts millions of people. Working with you has been an immense privilege that I will carry with me throughout my career and my life. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli, for your tireless public service. You deserve lots of rest. I hope you enjoy retirement as much, if not more, than you have serving as county supervisor. And I promise to do my best to carry forward your dedication to building a more just future for our county.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Next, we have Dan Aderhold, then Diana Pageto.
Hey, Dawn. Hey, guys. Dawn, I want to say your determination and devotion for helping our community has been way above, excel, expectation that a human can do. You have been there with the Board members here, and you guys have been doing outstanding job helping our community through the years. And I'd like to thank, we built a good friendship between me and you through the years, helping the homeless and everybody out here we could help, and the pets and everything. And I want to thank you for being that person that's standing up and helping everybody, along with Serna, Sue Frost, and all of you guys, Rich Desmond, Candy. I want to say thank you, guys, for being there. And Dawn, I hope you are going to come out and meet my crew and hang out with us, though. They invite you still there for you. And that goes for everybody here. We would like you guys to come out and meet everybody out here, because we're out here cleaning every day, making our community beautiful, but we couldn't do it without your guys' help. I'm going to make that clear to you guys. And Dawn, you've always been there all through these years, Serna, Frost, all of you, Candy. You guys have always been there through the years supporting us, and I want to say thank you, Dawn.
You're welcome.
And thank you all the Board members for being there, and we look forward to helping all the two years. Look forward to helping keep in touch with you, because, man, you crack me up at times, Dawn. I can be the most pissed-off mood, and you'll just cheer me up in a split second, man. Make me laugh like hell. You know, that's just the personality of you are, Dawn. You're a good guy.
Thanks, Diana.
And I love you for that, brother. And I hope we can still be friends and keep in touch.
Okay.
God bless, brother.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you.
Okay, Diana.
Hello. It is my honor. I'm here representing two people, the American River Parkway Foundation and then also myself. So from the Parkway Foundation, thank you, thank you, thank you for everything you have done from the creation of a deputy director position, and that's not only to you, Dawn, but as to everyone on this dais, to the creation of a natural resources management plan, for your tireless and hours helping rebuild the Riverbend Outdoor Education Center with the rotaring that we had many, many meetings on. And hopefully, one of these days, those bathrooms will actually be built. We just found out today that our permit did not go through again. So one day, those bathrooms will be built out there so they can be enjoyed, and for all the tireless efforts that you have done, the additional funds to the Parks Department, and, most importantly, coming out and participating as a volunteer, because I think that is huge to really go out there, remove tons of trash, and talk to those that are living out on the parkways. So thank you.
Thank you, Diana.
As a personal, thank you for your commitment to water skiing. For those of you that don't know, my son is the reigning disabled world champion, and in 2023, they will be held at Short Line Lake again Worlds. So thank you for helping the Bushes, the Detrix, everybody build Short Line Lake back in the day, and hopefully, once again, you can come out and speak as well as everyone else in September of 2023 at Short Line Lake as Sacramento once again welcomes the world of disabled water skiers here to Sacramento, California. So thank you, thank you. And don't forget, I know you have, must have a list yay-long from your wife of your honey-do list, so enjoy that. And we will be sending to you.
That's when the world begins.
Yeah, yeah. We know that's always the case, and we will be sending to you a gift because we, after your, because we didn't want you to have to fill out any additional forms. So.
That's very, that's very kind.
Thank you for your tireless efforts, and we know that you will not walk away. You will just not be sitting behind the desk. So we look forward to continued working relationships in the future.
Thanks, Diana.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Diana. Next, we have the Honorable Darren Soon.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Dawn, I wasn't going to miss this opportunity. You came down to Elk Grove, and I only could catch you on video, but.
You were live from New York City, weren't you, somewhere?
Yeah. Well, I just want to take the opportunity to come down here and greet you at your last meeting, and I can't, you know, I can't thank you enough. It was mentioned earlier, you know, your sustained dedication to public service, not only to me, but, you know, with my father, when my father worked for Sacramento County. I'm glad you two got to talk a little bit on the phone. He always talked about how well he enjoyed working with you, even when you were Chief of Staff for Toby Johnson, and, you know, he sends his well wishes and congratulations as well. Just personally, again, for me, thank you for your mentorship and support back in the days when you appointed me to your Community Planning Advisory Council, and since I've been on the council, you've been extremely supportive and guided me through some challenging issues we've had. You'll be sorely missed in the community. Like everybody knows, you know everybody's, everybody else's name, their spouse's name, their kid's name, their pet's name. I think they broke the mold with you, Supervisor Natoli. I really do. Just want to recognize you for your passion and commitment to the community, and we look forward to seeing you around at events in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Darren.
Okay, next, I have Nick Avdis and then Matt Johnson.
I want to say thanks, Dawn. It just feels weird to say that from the podium. Anyway, I've been practicing, obviously, land use law for a couple decades, and a big part of that has been here in Sacramento County. And Dawn, I got to tell you, over the years, I've gotten to know you and what you stand for, and honestly, you embody, I think, the, all the characteristics of an elected official that I think our founding fathers really envisioned, and you set a pretty high bar and I think a shining example for those in service now, but those to come as well. And I just wanted to say thank you for your service, and I'm going to miss seeing you up there.
Thanks, Nick.
Good luck with the retirement, Dawn.
Thank you much.
Thank you, Nick. Okay, Matt.
I don't think there's a reason to speak now because Mackenzie pretty much said everything. She, she filled it all in. I would say this, though. I think we can all say we were thrilled the day that your flip phone broke because we could start texting you, but it also meant that we may not be able to engage the same way with you. Just last week, I texted Dawn as he was going through a meeting, marathon session with all of you, and hearing the commentators, and I was watching online, and I just said, hey, Dawn, thanks for everything that you do. And I also said, you know, you are like a brother, and you're like a brother to me, you're like a brother to my brothers. Really had no intention of speaking, let alone getting emotional, Dawn. You can't cry.
You're getting.
But it's true. We've known each other a very long time, and Dawn, you didn't just set the bar high as an elected official, but as a man. You are someone who is sincere, you're caring, you're loving, and when you say you're going to do something, you do something. And it's not something that we need to learn from an elected official, but just as a person in general, that we can take that lesson away. And I will, I will close by referencing something that was mentioned about your knowledge of names. I'll never forget a story that my mom told when you were, you were out walking precincts, and parents came by and kids came by, and then the dog ran across the street, and Dawn called the dog by name. And there was another politician from the valley down there and said, if. And there was another politician from the valley down there and said, if he knows the names of the dogs, nobody else knows it has a chance against him. Don, thank you for everything you've done for this county. Thank you for everything you've done for our family.
Thank you, Maddie.
Thank you, Matt. Do you have any public comment on the phone?
So we have callers, at least one. Could you, will you transfer the caller, please?
I just wanted to say thank you to all of the folks who made comments thus far. I'm kind of caught up with the emotion here. I'll get a chance before we're done, but thank you, too. I know I'm out of order, Mr. Chair, so--
You can use the gavel.
You have a wide berth.
Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes. Hello? Yes, thank you. You have three minutes.
Okay, I'm turning down the background. Thank you. Hi Supervisor Natoli. I'm going to read what we submitted.
Hi, Lynn.
This is Lynn Berkeley-Bastian. You knew my name just by hearing my voice, which tells everyone in the room everything. To the Honorable Supervisor for District 5, Don Natoli, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Supervisor Natoli, you have given, you have proven yourself by this demanding measure. You never stop questioning and being curious. You have deep respect for the decision-making process. In your quest to serve this county, you practice transparency, generosity of self, and grace. In moments where your power could easily shut out voices of dissent, you welcome civil discourse. You engage and question and model the best of what a genuinely caring elected steward can offer. Your value, you value the voices of the people you serve in the county equal to the voices of those employed to manage it. Although we do not always share the same opinions, with every moment that we engage, you are willing to look at the facts, ask the hard questions, and challenge both our conclusions and your own. No matter how busy you are, you are responsive. You make yourself accessible even just for a 15-minute Q and A. You don't simply state your values, you practice them. You don't simply express your care for this county and its residents, you show it with the care you take in making the difficult decisions entrusted to you. You don't take the easy path and accept only the limited information and options presented to you. Instead, you take the time to learn more and consider the very real, long-term impacts of your decisions on the people you serve. Your example raises the bar for this and future boards of supervisors, and we hope it will inspire each of your colleagues to challenge conventional wisdom and think issues through more deeply. For all of the aforementioned reasons, and so many more, it is with the highest respect Justice to Jobs wishes you a meaningful retirement. As you reflect on your long career in public service, including the comfortable decisions and those that drew controversy, we hope you will take great satisfaction in the ones that have proven wise and prescient, and offer yourself grace for those which, with the benefit of hindsight, you may have second thoughts. You have always strived to serve the people of Sacramento County well, and you have. We thank you for that respectfully and with warmest gratitude. That's from me, as the co-founder of Justice to Jobs, but all of our team, thank you, thank you, from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you, Lynn.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, well, thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll, we'll close public comments, and now I'll move on. We have several presentations, and I'll list the order, as you can imagine. I'll list the order here. We will start with Flo Evans from the Clerk's Office, then Lisa Travis, our CEO, Supervisor Serna, and then I will, I will back clean up to present you with a resolution. So would I, would you please oblige us and go down to the podium? Chair Natoli?
Thank you. Don, this is your life.
And I would like to invite the clerk staff. They're here with us in the chambers. We want to present something to you together. So I'd like to invite-- [inaudible]. Come on. This is your one and only opportunity.
Okay, Flo, you have one minute.
Oh, no. I would like a five-minute option here. No, I'll try to make this really fast, out of respect for everyone's time. I know that people have places to go, but nothing more important than this. And I'm going to try not to cry, because I've already done that. I know. It is truly an honor to be able to serve as the clerk and to work with this magnificent team. And it really is because of you, the other board members, our boss, Ann, that you empower us to do our jobs. You allow us to have the authority to run boards and commissions. You believe in us, you support us. You're even here with us at like nine or 10 o'clock on Friday nights, checking in to see what we're doing and running ideas by us, and you're so inclusive. You truly are a class act. And everything that everyone has said about you in here is absolutely true, above and beyond. You are a man of integrity, you are a man of your word, you are a man of kindness, you are a man of generosity, you are a friend and a colleague to everyone. I've seen you treat everyone with respect, and no matter how frustrated I am, or however many times I've bombed things, you've always picked me up off the ground, and you find something positive to say about it, and you give, you give me hope that we can recover. And yes, I've already said this before, the public comments are just like killing me. No disrespect to Decarcerate or all the other activists, but my God, this has been It has, it has been a year. I mean, we have lost weight because we're starving, or we've gained weight because we're eating from the stress, or we're eating late. But in all seriousness, it has been an honor. We were able to experience something that we probably never will experience again, maybe, who knows? In the sense that we've worked through a really hard year. And to just have the opportunity to be the clerk of the board office and to sit on that same floor with you all is truly an honor. It really is. And I don't think that I can sit here and even explain the dynamics of that and the types of relationships that are cultivated out of that because of the sense of intimacy that we all get to be with you and the executive team. It is such an honor. But to see you leave, I haven't really wrapped my brain around it, and I told you last night that we still have two weeks. So I'm just going to leave it at that. And I want to leave you something that I think that you will appreciate. So I would like to introduce a very young artist who is in the 10th grade, and she attends high school in Fairfield, California. She is the daughter of Candace Mabra, who is an HR manager and the executive director of Metro Cable. And this young artist, her name is Yasenia Mabra. We had commissioned her to do a painting called "The Public Comments," and so I'd And this is what we are presenting.
And make sure you note the clock, Don.
She has painted every supervisor with such detail and absolutely beautiful. She has the county executive in the picture, absolutely beautiful.
They're all looking a little shrug in there at 97 minutes.
She is not, because she's in the 10th grade, but her mother is. I would like, I would like Candace to just give you just a small glimpse of the number of hours that her child put into this the minute that we commissioned her, which was a little while back, but how serious and dedicated she was, how many times she looked at all the stills that we provided her, thanks to Metro Cable. They provided a bunch of stills. This is a very young, up-and-coming artist, and I hope you all can appreciate her work. Yes, and so if Candace, if Candace could come here and just give a small glimpse of just what Yasenia went through to make this happen.
So I'm going to watch all those board meetings.
She did. She did. She watched a lot of board meetings, she pulled up all of your pages, and she definitely focused in on you. I want to say she spent about 90 hours on it.
Wow.
She even changed my hair. She did. She did.
Did she change mine?
You all look young, and you look fabulous and youthful. No, she did an exquisite job. Thank you. This was an honor. Thank you.
I will personally thank her, but that's just with her treasure, so. Thank you for sharing this time with your staff. I'll get a chance in a moment to say some folks, but this is really very unexpected and wow, what a tremendous work of heart, so I hope that I will treasure.
Well, we love you, John.
Thank you. Thank you, Flo, and all the clerk staff. Okay, next, I would ask Lisa Travis on behalf of the Office of County Counsel.
Strange being right here. I don't know if I like it. Well, Don, on behalf of our office, the Office of County Counsel, we want to thank you for your humble, kind, and very generous treatment of our office over the years. You had the chance to come out to our office a couple weeks ago in our all-office meeting, and probably people that you had never met, because they don't work downtown and never worked with, but everybody was so grateful that you were able to come out and spend an hour with us, telling, reflecting on your career and reflecting on your relationship with our office. And I asked you at the meeting what you would say to your successor, or I guess it could be to any board member at this point, what you would tell them about dealing with our office and advice. And you were so kind, and you were so gracious about, you know, you don't always agree with us, as, you know, nobody, not everybody does, but you always appreciate us, and you always understand that the reason why we're giving you the advice, whether or not you agree with it, is because we're doing what we think is best for the county and for the board. So I really appreciate you saying that and expressing that, and I've experienced that over the last 25 years working with you. So on behalf of our office, we did take up a collection to provide to you, and you don't have to open it now, but we collected funds for a cause that is near and dear to our heart, and I think it is as well as yours, which is Gifts from the Heart, because as you know, our office represents CPS and Senior and Adult Services, and we work very closely with them and also participate in that program very often. So we did make a donation in your honor, and we really do appreciate you, and will certainly miss you. And our discussions about the fun things like Locke and Point Pleasant and the Sacramento Waste Way, and the list goes on and on. But like I said, even when we didn't agree and we didn't like our advice, you were always respectful, knowledgeable, and very humble. So we do appreciate you, and we will certainly, certainly miss you. Thanks.
Next, we have our CEO, Ann Edwards.
Hi, Don. So on behalf of both myself and my executive team, which includes all of the deputies, Kim Nava and Amanda Thomas, we really want to thank you for your many years of service. You know, I've been with the county for 25 years and worked closely with you for probably 18 or 20 of those years. And, you know, everything I planned to say, everyone else has said. You really are a very caring, compassionate, I'm just going to say human being, because that is just who you are. And you listen to anybody and everybody, including me and everyone on my team. And, well, you know, not-- And, you know, as Lisa said, it is also my job to make recommendations to you all that you may not like from time to time, but you're always respectful, and I really have appreciated working with you over the years and some of the conversations we've had about family and faith and all of those things. So we really will miss you. And, you know, it's funny, we, I'm going to make a little funny about the, we've been talking a bit about public comment today. So--
97 minutes.
The very, the very first meeting of this year with you as chair, we were all on Zoom because of COVID. I actually had COVID. I had a temperature of about 102, and it was a 13-hour meeting. And the last meeting of this year was also, not the last one, because yesterday wasn't, but last week, we sort of bookend with another, I think, I don't know if it was 12 or 13 hours.
It was 13.
It was 13. That's what I thought. And we know you well enough to know that you don't really want a gift, so I actually brought scissors up here because I made the mistake of wrapping this.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Yeah, just cut the ribbon, and then you can open the paper.
Okay. That's such a pretty bow. I mean, should I cut it?
Just cut it, yeah.
This is your, your last ceremonial ribbon-cutting night.
There you go. Yeah, open it. Yes, please.
Yeah, with the 13-hour meetings, I thought Ann was about ready to quit after that first one.
I was, no.
And wrestling. I have my apologies, but I'm never going to get a new chair right now, so.
So we know that when you present resolutions to individuals or groups, it actually holds a lot of meaning for you. So myself and the team put together a book of 100-plus resolutions in chronological order so that, because we know you want to keep them, and that's not all of them, we just couldn't possibly do all of them.
Oh, wow.
Look at the back, back cover.
I saw. Yeah. I don't know who that guy is, tell you what. Gotta retire. Well, that's very, very special. What a, what a treasure, the comments and certainly this, and thanks to everybody who contributed to this. I mean, there's been, yeah, a few proclamations and resolutions over the years, and this will be a good, good remembrance of that. I see that Rebecca had a hand in this, so I'll give you some thanks.
Yes, thank you, Rebecca, because she did help us get the resolutions together.
And just to note, there's a couple photos there with, and again, I'm going to acknowledge both Matt and Thad Johnson here, but my very, very good friend and mentor, Toby Johnson.
Well, Godspeed and best wishes.
Two more presentations.
Well, as many speakers have already noted, the sequence of folks that are here to speak to your pending retirement have really said much of what each of us wants to convey, but I guess what I'd like to perhaps focus on in the few words that I want to share is the fact that, you know, I really not only enjoyed the last 12 years of serving on this board with you, Don, but, you know, I think we're safe to say more than just colleagues, we're close friends. And, you know, I'm going to miss, you know, sharing the dais with you for sure, but perhaps even more so, just the lunches that occasionally we'd go have on K Street, and, you know, we'd talk about life, we'd talk about county governance, we'd talk about the history of the county. You have certainly proved to be an invaluable mentor. There's nothing really that prepares you quite enough to serve, I think, as an effective member of a board of supervisors. I just think county governance, I've shared this with you many times, I think county governance is a very, very special call to service. And it's one that still, quite frankly, is a-- a mystery to a lot of folks. People, I think, realize who their council people are, they know who the mayor is, certainly in a capital city, they understand who governs the state. But county government and governance and all the services that we all provide as a team here is still something that not too many people are familiar with. And as I've stated many times, you know, I don't have any other interest going anywhere else, and that's largely because of, again, gaining what I have, not just from the experience of service with you, but, you know, understanding the budget carefully. Your memory is encyclopedic. No one knows, I'm convinced no one knows the county budget better than you, even, and this is no, no offense to staff, but, but I would say even, even staff in some instances. And, you know, the fact that you, not only, the fact that we have not only had a chance to serve together, but that you had a chance to serve with my late father, Joe Serna Jr., that was also kind of lent itself to the nature of our bond. And so I just want to thank you, my friend, tell you I love you. You know, I'm going to try and summon, you know, the Don Natoliosms, especially every June when we're considering the budget, but you really have taught me a great deal about the import of county public service, as many have already noted. I think you have, for the longest time, been the most underappreciated, underrated public servant we have in Northern California. And the fact that you have, you know, an assortment of folks that have served with you, and the words that they've shared, I think, has proved positive that it's not just me that feels that way. So I know that you'll stay in touch, and if I, or any of us happen to go astray, you'll let us know. But with that, I do want to share with you a gift, a memento, small one, that has been signed by the entire second floor, so not just your colleagues, but all of the clerk of the board's staff, and I would encourage you to read what's written, because some of it's pretty special. The last thing I'll say about, about you is you are someone that has certainly let his faith shape who you are and how you govern, and that's not lost on me and many of us. I know that on occasion, if Don's not around at maybe the lunch hour, on those rare occasions, we get a lunch hour, he might be down at the cathedral, you know, taking mass. And, you know, there's a few of us up on this dais that are of the Catholic faith, and I know that's really important to you and affects how you make decisions and how it shapes your morality and how that manifests itself in terms of those decisions and how best to govern. So with that, I want to share with you this photo that I took a few years ago, and it's entitled Heavenly Clutch, and I'll turn it around here so everyone can see it in a minute. But it's a photo, black and white photo of a sculpture by a visiting Mexican artist named Jorge Marin. There was an installation, it was temporary, around town of sculptures, all of winged angelic figures. This one happened to reside right outside of the cathedral, and if you look closely, you'll see a reflection of the cathedral window there. But I thought this is something that really reflects who you are.
Okay, I'll come down and do a resolution, then I know Supervisor Frost would say a few words, and then followed by Supervisor Kenny.
Well, Don, I certainly have big shoes to fill coming in as Chair here, and, you know, it's amazing, there's a lot of love in this room for you. My goodness, it is, it is really something else. I have, I have a few things I'd like to present to you, and I put several of them in this box, which is, which has, which has significance, for those of you who don't know. You know, when I, when I first, I've only been here, unfortunately, I have the, I haven't been able to serve with Don for very long and, much to my chagrin, but I've tried to soak it all in, but when I first started, I told my staff, well, what does Don do? What does Supervisor Natoli do? I want to do the same thing. And, and he would be lugging down these banker's boxes and huge binders, and I tell you, I just didn't have the strength or the stamina for it. And so, you know, I wanted to put this in a box, so, you know, we wanted to buy you an iPad, actually, Don, all the stuff. So I have a few things, a few things in here I'd like to share with you. First, you know, I was looking around the house and I noticed something in the kitchen, this timer, this, this kitchen timer. And, you know, the remarkable thing about this timer is, you know, you put it on 3:00 and it doesn't ring for 10 minutes, either 8 to 10 minutes.
I'm not leaving here for you.
So, I want to give that to you. Another thing here, but, but, you know, funny, you know, we all make jokes about that, but to me, that really, the fact, this whole issue about public comment, but to me, that just really illustrates your approach to public service. It is so important to you, it always has been, to hear from people, hear their voices, let them be heard, make sure that they know that their local elected officials are listening to them and being responsive to them, and, and that is something that I admire deeply, and so many people do. The other thing I admire deeply is your love of candy, and so we got you. My staff and I picked out a few things from the candy barrel and old sack for you to take with you. For those of you who don't know, Don has a bit of a sweet tooth, and I don't think anybody's candy dish in the office was avoided his late-night traipsing around the office.
Yeah, a little empty in the morning.
A little empty in the morning. The other thing, the other thing is, so I have this bobblehead, this is, you'll notice this is a Dwight bobblehead from the office, and it's a placeholder, because we ordered you, and we ordered, we ordered a custom bobblehead of you, okay? It's not here yet, it's in Hong Kong, and I was, and Vanessa in my office, I think, contacted the shipper, and they said they were having a tough time just getting the hair right on top of the bobblehead. So, so it took a little more time. So this is, this is a placeholder for you, Don. And so here I also, here I have a.
Mark.
No, that, that's Dwight from the office. I don't know, you probably don't have a.
Oh, Dwight from the.
Dwight Schrute.
It's Don, it's on the TV machine.
Here's an apple pie I made for you last night when I got home.
Wow.
And yes, it is homemade crust, too, with Crisco.
Nice.
Because I, because I promised you I would do that, and, so next, I'm going to read a resolution that your, your, my colleagues and I, your colleagues have all, have all signed. I'm going to read this, let me slip this box out of the way here. Your briefcase. So I am actually, I know, actually, when the real bobblehead comes, I'm thinking we should leave it on Flo's desk, you know? So I'm going to.
You as Chair, you know.
That's right. That's, it'll be a lot of pressure, though, that'll be good. We've discussed Catholic guilt is a strong force. So I'm actually going to read this entire resolution, because I think it bears reading. Resolution honoring Supervisor Don Natoli on the occasion of his retirement.
I didn't vote on this one, you know that.
No, your, your signature is noticeably absent from the resolution. Whereas after 28 years of dedicated service and leadership on the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors as the 5th District County Supervisor, Supervisor Don Natoli is retiring as the longest-serving county supervisor in Sacramento's history. And whereas Supervisor Don Natoli's service to the 5th District in Sacramento County started much earlier in his position as chief assistant to former 5th District County Supervisor Toby Johnson for 16 years. And whereas Supervisor Don Natoli began his service at a young age, serving as a member of the Galt City Council, where he was elected in 1978, and a board member with the Galt High School District Board of Trustees, where he was elected in 1977 and served more than 17 years. But his real start in public service started in high school, where he served as a member of the student council all four years and a senior class president at Galt High School. And whereas Supervisor Don Natoli and his wife Brenda are lifelong residents of Sacramento County and made their home in the community of Galt. And whereas Supervisor Don Natoli is a graduate of California State University Sacramento, where he earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in government journalism, and his education, work experience, and knowledge of the community made him an excellent choice for county supervisor. And whereas Supervisor Don Natoli has served on numerous boards and commissions during his seven terms on the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, including the Sacramento Employment and Training Agency, Delta Protection Commission, Delta Stewardship Council, Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, Sacramento Cable Commission, Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, Sacramento Public Library Commission.
Second page.
Authority. That is the thing, we actually, I was going to be like Moses holding tablets here, because we had, it's like a two font for this resolution. Solid Waste Authority, Sacramento Transportation Authority, Basin White Air Pollution Control Council, Sacramento Regional Transit District, and the Freeport Regional Water Authority. And whereas Supervisor Don Natoli is also known for his deep understanding of Sacramento County history and can provide a historical context to any ordinance passed during his tenure, and his wealth of knowledge is usually more accurate than documented county records, which is, and I know that as someone who was in state service for many, many years, I know that, that staff sometimes takes advantage of, of, you know, young elected officials like me, because we don't know anything, but, you know, they couldn't do that with you for an awful long time. Whereas Supervisor, whereas while the large majority of Supervisor Don Natoli's time is dedicated to working for his human constituents, he also has a strong connection to and compassion for our four-legged residents, and has rescued countless animals over the years and is a staunch advocate for them. And whereas Supervisor Don Natoli's achievements are too numerous to list, but some of his major accomplishments in Sacramento County include the development of the Mather Veterans Village, establishment of a senior safe house for our vulnerable elderly, investments in the animal shelter to improve care and achieve a greater than 90% live release rate, and his advocacy for the very unique nature of the Sacramento Delta. And whereas Supervisor Don Natoli has a servant's heart and will be known for his friendly disposition, love of sweets, and most importantly, his steadfast devotion to the constituents he has represented for the past 28 years, who have known him to be one of the hardest-working elected officials throughout our region. And whereas Supervisor Don Natoli has put in countless hours, days, and years working for the people of Sacramento County and is most deserving of his well-earned retirement, which he will spend with his wife Brenda, traveling to state and national parks, and of course, volunteering. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, does hereby extend sincere appreciation to Supervisor Don Natoli for his 44 years of dedicated service to the people of Sacramento County, and further commends him for his exceptional contributions to the betterment of the community, and finally offers its, offers its very best wishes to Supervisor Natoli and his wife Brenda for good health, much happiness, and many blessings in all the years to come. One more thing, so Renee, I'd like Renee from District 3 to come down. Renee, my staff put together a little collage, some, some photos for you to add to your, to the other memorabilia here.
Mr. Natoli, you know, this is not my forte. I like being in the background, but just for you, and I can't say enough, 17 years ago, when I walked in this office, my second day here, you walked by me, I will never forget. How you doing, Renee? And I was amazed you remembered my name, and that has resonated with my heart forever, and you have always been such a strong supporter of our office, the event committee, the potlucks, my quilts hanging at the state fair. You have always been there, and you're going to be missed. I thought about you as we were putting together this collage, because you and I were back in the days when they put your picture on the back of the holiday pay calendars. I was cleaning out my desk, and I happened to have two that I put together, so when we made, I made a collage of 44, of trying to capture 44 years of you, and the only thing that I can say is different is that you wore a lot of dark blue suit jackets at that time. It's a little bit different today, but this is in honor of you from our office to you. We wish you the best in your retirement, and please come back and see us again.
And one, I have one more thing, Don, for, on behalf of my, my colleagues and I, we, and I hope this, this probably does not bode well for my upcoming tenure as Chair, but we called to order a large check, and we only got this check. So it doesn't make for as good of a photo op, but it is frugal.
It's paid $200 to $200.
From, from, yes, from, from my, my, your colleagues donated $200 to Teaching Everyone Animals Matter, made this donation on your behalf, so. And before I turn it over to Supervisor Frost, who I know will say a few words, and Supervisor Kennedy, and then I think we'll take a, take a photo together, let me just say, you know, Don, when I, when I think, and I, and I've known you since when I was in the Highway Patrol my prior life, and when you look up local elected official or, like any elected official, there should be a picture of you next to that definition, because you, you epitomize what it means to be an elected official, and it's, and it's not only your direct service to your constituents and everyone in Sacramento County, but your, your devotion to this good government. And, and every time you speak, I learn something, and that's why I'm going to miss you so much, because I've been trying to soak it in for two years, and I hope that, you know, I can do you proud during my tenure on the Board of Supervisors, because it's been an honor to work with you for, for a short amount of time. And with that, Sue, I'll turn over to you.
It's easier when you take it sitting down.
Well, Don, we have not been looking forward to this day. I remember when I was first elected, I was told that I should seek out Don Natoli, because he will know where all the skeletons are buried, and, and especially in Rancho Marietta. They, that was, I guess that was early on, you had had Rancho Marietta for a long, long time, and somehow the, it was redistricting, and I ended up with Rancho Marietta, and even to, to those times when we were trying to figure out, you know, maps out there, and I knew I could always go to you, and I want to thank you for your consistent inspirational leadership and your, your help along the way. There were times when I was a little bit discouraged, I remember pulling you into my office one day and saying, I don't know how I'm going to get this library, nobody wants to do the library, and you said, oh, don't worry about it, we'll figure it out, we'll get it done. And, and you helped me with that, and I, I've always appreciated that. I always remember you were the, usually the first one at the county in the morning and the last one to leave, and I knew that, because my chief of staff was oftentimes here late at night, and he said, Don is here late all the time. "Dawn is here late all the time." You had, I think between you and Susan Peters, you were the last of the box carriers or rollers. Susan rolled hers. But you're the only person I know that has more than one park named after you. In fact, I think two parks and other things. So it's wonderful to see that, the love from the community that comes to you. And I just want you to know that it doesn't go unnoticed by all of us that you never did forget who you worked for. And I don't think I'm ever going to come to a public, off-agenda or on-agenda, public comment without thinking of Don Natoli. So Dawn, I'm hoping that you enjoy God's richest blessings in your retirement and I hope it's the brightest time of your life and I, if you get, I don't know how you're going to do it because you're used to being so busy, you're going to go to silence. It's going to be an adjustment, but I know you'll enjoy it and I wish you every happiness. And Brenda too.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to Dawn. Don't set this too high, folks. You know, one of the things that's always, I found really cool about the Board of Supervisors is that, you know, everyone sitting up here was born and raised in the district they represent. I don't think there's many large counties you can say that about. We were all born in the district. We served the district. Dawn's the only one that actually remembers the day of his birth. But I wanted to actually go into your office earlier before this started to really give you a personal message, Dawn. And you weren't there and I was astonished to find there was a desk in there. And so I've been thinking, you know, what do I give Dawn as a gift that's appropriate? I thought about giving him this chair, but after this year, it's conformed to my butt. You know, perhaps a lifetime position on the Lock Management Corporation would be appropriate. But in seriousness, I, the first time I ever stepped foot in this building was in 1984 and I won't go into the details, I've told the story many times. And I got a tour from Don Natoli in 1984 when I was about 16 years old and Dawn was about 15 years old. And, you know, I didn't know what county government was. I certainly didn't know that 30 years later I would be elected to serve with you. But I have to say that one of the true joys... Y'all knew I was going to do that. One of the joys of my public life and 30 years of public service has been the eight years that I've had serving with you, sir. On a serious note, you know, I've watched you with the Delta and it was alluded to earlier in the resolution where the Delta is with you. And I don't know that there's anybody in this building that appreciates that more than I do, having served with you this last eight years on the Delta Counties Coalition. And watching you and the devotion that you have and the knowledge you have and more importantly, the respect that you have. I mean, there would be some that would think that other counties would take the lead on the Delta Counties Coalition, but it's been Sacramento County for quite some time and that's purely because you know more, you care more, and you do more for the Delta than probably anybody ever has in history of local government. And I bring that up just because I know it's going to be difficult for you to, you know, step away from that particular role and you won't step away from it, you can't. But I just want you to know from my heart, and I'm not going to say a lot of personal stuff because you and I had the opportunity to visit for about an hour and a half recently. And, but I want you to know that, as I've told you before, I hope that you know that I will do everything I can. I cannot match you, but I will do everything I can to aspire to be what you have been to the Delta in Sacramento County. Thank you for your service, friend.
Okay, I'll turn it over to you, Chair Natoli.
All right. It's a little bit overwhelming, but I just would take a few minutes here or two, more than three, but not 97. I want to, again, say to all the folks that are here today and to all the folks that have graced my life in so many ways with their sharing of their love, of their, you know, views on the world, but as Phil said earlier, and again, I don't say this very often, but you know, the Lord has guided my life. And I have been so blessed because the good Lord has seen that I've, you know, had loving parents, I've had a loving wife, I've had loving family, I've had the county family, I've had friends who, again, are life friends. And public service has been a passion, but you know, if you'd asked me, you know, when I was in high school, and I know you reflected on that in the resolution, you know, what I would be doing, you know, for the rest of my life, I certainly had an idea that I would have an opportunity to serve in some capacity, but this has exceeded, you know, certainly my wildest expectations, if I even had expectations at the time. And I want to say again, thank you to my family. I know that both Toby and Matt Johnson are here today and because of Toby, I was given the opportunity to come to work with the County of Sacramento in January of 1979 and the opportunity to learn, to learn from you in this room, from others who've preceded you, and to have that opportunity to, I think, one, gain an understanding of what public service, certainly at the local government level, meant, but also how one could bring their, you know, own personality to that in a way that certainly reflected, you know, good, strong government and values, but also that you could make a difference in the lives of those around you. And I would just say that some of the greatest satisfaction in this time I've had the chance to serve, certainly in elective office, but just in working with the County of Sacramento have been the opportunities to engage with people, to learn more about whatever their situation was and certainly the time spent here at the dais over the last 28 years. But even before that, finding satisfaction, being able to help people in situations that might involve the county or not. And I'll just share this because it's very current. I had a call, it was on my message machine, yes, I still have a landline at home, on Sunday from someone who had reached out, threw a message on my machine a few months ago and again, was calling on behalf of someone they know who was homeless and having some very serious health issues. And so again, as any of folks up here would and others would as well, I brought that back to the office. We were able to do some follow-up with intermediary and I didn't know for certain whether the person had gotten housed, but this past Sunday I had a message on the phone, it was a message of appreciation and thanks and saying that the person had passed away recently, but that in his last few weeks, he had been comforted because he'd been in a place where he was housed and had had, you know, the love and attention of folks that cared about him. And, you know, that's what this is all about. This is what life's about, is to have the opportunity to share with one another. Some of us are given the responsibility because we seek public office of making decisions on behalf of those that we represent. But I will just say that my life is very, very fulfilled and I kid about it at times. I've said it here a couple of times today that, you know, over the course of the last 40-plus years, I've been given the opportunity to devote myself to the work at hand and to celebrate with the community at times, to obviously struggle through some of the things we do here, the county, and sometimes to grieve with the community. But I haven't spent very much time at home and I know my wife Brenda, who's been very devoted, is looking forward to more time spent together and I'm looking forward to that as well. But I want to thank all of you. Today is just something that, again, I, you know, I say with all sincerity, that I will treasure the comments and certainly the reflections and some of the beautiful, you know, things that have been shared here that are certainly emblematic, but representative of a life shared with all of you and many, many others. And I am truly grateful. I'm blessed, I say this many times too, that blessed in so many ways. We live in a country where we enjoy tremendous opportunity and I've been blessed with good health, I've been blessed with good friends, with, you know, a career that's given me the opportunity to serve. And I've enjoyed my friendship and collegiate relationship with all the folks here and those that have, you know, preceded you. And, you know, I have great faith and trust that in working together, we can, you know, take on a lot of the issues of the day and that if we can look back on our lives and our careers over that and you know that we're guided by the values that were instilled in us and we love and respect one another, that we can do a lot of great things and we have. Certainly this county and the communities and the people of this county are very fortunate to have, you know, folks that are in this room and many others to serve them each and every day. So it's with a tremendous amount of respect and love for all of you and for thousands of others, again, who, as I said, have graced my life in so many ways, that I want to express my gratitude and thanks and thank you for the recognition today. It's been a bit overwhelming. I know Lisa mentioned I spoke with a group from county council a couple of weeks ago and my emotions have been riding, kind of riding about here all, you know, for the last couple of months. And tears are good and laughter's good and, you know, life is good. And I just, I just know that as I step away and certainly leave to others to, you know, continue the roles that you all have in this organization, in this community, that, again, we are blessed in many ways and that good things will continue to be a part of that. So again, with my deepest gratitude and appreciation, I want to recognize the folks that have served alongside me, who are in the audience today, the most current roster of Rebecca Sloan and Jasmine Osmondy and Maria De Anda. And I've had many great folks over the years that have, you know, provided great clerical and secretarial support, have served the people of this county well. My, you know, former chiefs of staff, Pat Brazil, Cheryl Vanegas, Jane Smith, Sylvia Pershide, Latish Oliver, who was my secretary recently, but again, so blessed. And then to Ann and to all the executive staff and to all the folks, you know, this county employs well over 12,000 people, at least that's my positions we have. And it's, you know, people that get it done every day. And they, you know, they collect the garbage at curbside and they make sure that, you know, the water comes out of the tap as it should and it is clean and pure and we can have confidence in that and that the airplanes fly safely from the airport and, you know, that children and vulnerable folks, elders and others are, you know, have a safety net. And we just do a tremendous amount. And the breadth and depth of what the county does, as Phil said earlier, is, I think, not always understood, but if nothing else, I've gained an understanding of that. I've done my best, as I've said many times, that's all we can ask of ourselves, is do your very best every day. And if I fall short, I fall short. I try to learn from my mistakes and, you know, continue to reflect on, you know, what is good. And again, I've learned from each of you up here, many, many things. I've learned about myself and I want to just thank my family, I want to thank my friends, I want to thank all of you who spoke today from the heart. And again, I take those away with a very full, full heart. And I wanted to say that it's been a tremendous honor, it's been a tremendous privilege to have served this community and this county for the years that I have, to have had that opportunity. And I will be forever grateful for the friendships, certainly the expressions here today, but for all that it's meant to be a part of this community. And I, you know, will continue to be a part of this community, just serving probably in different ways. And with that, thank you so very, very much.
I'd like to go down and take some photos. Supervisors, can we do that? Should I announce reception? So I will just remind everybody, we have a reception in the lobby and there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Natoli, we need you to cut the...